Sorry, everybody. For some reason, the meeting just booted everybody and yeah, I don't know what happened.
I'm back.
Thank you, Lisa. Hello.
Hi.
I'm back.
I'm back, Mike.
Uh, no, can you start it somewhere else? Break room? I don't know. Sorry, everybody. For whatever reason, the computer just booted everybody. So we're just waiting to get everybody back. Too cold. I think I've got mostly everybody.
I think so.
You're back, Jerry.
Are we ready to go?
Uh, I still don't have the mayor pro tem yet. Let me text her real quick and see if she can rejoin us.
All right.
Well, it looks like Clint Conley is trying to join, so that's probably her. Hi Clint, is that Clint or is that Pam? Is that Pam or Clint? Can you hear me?
I don't know, I kicked out and I'm getting back in.
Yep, everybody got booted for some reason. So we're just waiting a few extra minutes to get everybody back in the meeting.
Okay.
Do we have Mrs. Nixon?
Uh, I do not see Mrs. Nixon. Let me contact her.
Well, we can get going, I guess.
I'm just gonna mute myself for a second while I call Mrs. Nixon.
Okay, uh, you want me to start the meeting and go through roll call and all that?
Uh, if you feel comfortable moving forward, that's fine.
We do have a quorum. All right, uh, at this time, I would call the regular meeting of the Cedar Springs City Council to order on Thursday, December 10th, 2020 at 7:06. If you would all please rise and recite pledge with me if you may, can. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Have a roll call vote. Mrs. Atchison.
Here.
Good to see you. Mrs. Conley. Mr. Grosses. Mrs. Nixon. We'll check back later with her. Mrs. Powell.
Here.
Mrs. Race.
Here.
Mr. Hall is here. We can add Mrs. Nixon if she is able to log in. Moving on to public comment. The council welcomes and encourages the public to speak during the public comment of the public hearing portion of the agenda. However, council policy is to hear the public comment, not to act on the public comment at this time. Concerns brought before the council during the public comment portion of the agenda will be referred to the city manager for action. If, after communication with the city manager, no resolution is reached, the concerns will be elevated to the mayor and eventually to the council for action. Those citizens wishing to speak on agenda and non-agenda items will be allowed a maximum of four minutes each to address their concerns. This is the only time during the council meeting that citizens are allowed to address the council. Please state your name and address for the record if you would like.
Uh, so Mr. Hall, if you'll permit, um, I'm not aware of any members of the public in city hall. So I will go through the members of the public on Zoom.
Yes.
And I see a very eager librarian. Mrs. Clark.
Uh, well, what a great evening. I just want to wish all of you a very Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. And I love Pam's background with the community building team and the Christmas tree all lit up there. Such a nice time doing that on Saturday. And the only concern that I have is that we have already run out of 230 Christmas kits for kids. They're gone today. We gave out the last one. So I had an emergency meeting with the friends and asked if they would for, if they would finance $233 to get 144 more mugs and some Christmas bags that we could put the mugs in. Meyer gave us $250 for cookies and other things that we needed. Um, it has ornaments in it that kids can make. And the mug, you can take apart and put stickers and all kinds of stuff on them, put it back in the mug and seal it. So kids can get gifts or they can make their very own mug. Um, it has candy and just all kinds of goodies in it, but we are completely out. So it's a good problem where people need Christmas this year. They need the holidays, they need light, they need community. And there, we're, we're having over 100, 100 people a day. And we've had over 133 once in a while. But people are real excited about getting their kits. And I can say this, it's all safe. And people coming in don't usually stay that long. They'll come in and go to the computer, use it. We've never had people stay all day, just maybe a few minutes, get their stuff done, make copies, you know, fax and browse a little bit, get their books and leave. And we've never had to really police anyone. Only three times have we had a few people that had to wait in the entry uh, because we had our maximum of 12 people. But there's such room people can do, you know, be spread out and usually it'd be a mom and two kids and, you know, so we're really enjoying it. We love the routine of it. I will say this, if, if it ever becomes an issue with COVID, then we, we could go to curbside. But for right now, everybody's healthy and we're making a difference in the community. You know, we're a small community library. It's different from KDL that has 350 employees and 20 branches. We can make small moment by moment decisions for the safety of our community. And we just, we love Cedar Springs. We love all of you and just thank you for being on the front lines for us. I think that's four minutes.
Thank you, Donna.
Thank you. Libraries are critical right now. They're absolutely critical to keeping our communities going.
Yes.
Anyone else, Mr. Womack?
Mike, you're muted.
I'm sorry. I, it looks like I have Ashley. It might be Ashley Hamel. Ashley, do you have any public comment you'd like to make at this time?
It is Ashley Hamel. Uh, just hi and no other comments.
Thank you, Ms. Hamel. Uh, as council is aware, Ms. Hamel is a potential applicant for the planning commission, um, which I'll be seeking to add to the agenda when we get to that point. Uh, it looks like we also have Chandel Napparowski. Chandel, would you like to make a public comment at this time?
No, thank you.
I have Brenadette Powell. Ms. Brenadette Powell, would you like to make a public comment at this time?
Yes, I, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Thank you.
Okay, fantastic. Okay, I just found the website. I'm still having issues trying to find these Zoom meetings on the Facebook page. Um, happy holidays to everybody. I still haven't been able to zoom through the agenda. But, uh, thanks for everybody showing up tonight.
Okay, and that's all the, uh, public guests that we have. And I see Molly Nixon is just signing in now. Molly, would you like to say hello?
Yes, I, I apologize. I lost track of time, but I am on board with you now.
And I guess I would ask that we add her to, uh, being present at the meeting.
Yes. Madam Clerk, do you note that Mrs. Nixon is here? Any other persons wishing to address the council during public comment portion?
I don't see anybody at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Womack. Moving on then to, we have no public hearings?
None that I'm aware of.
Thank you. Moving on to number five, adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Man. Oh.
Sorry, I, I would like to add a couple of things if I could. Sorry, I know you guys wanted to make it a quick meeting, but, uh, I think these are important. So I would start out at 7:00 E. He is an elephant. Uh, I would like to add, uh, a motion to appoint Mr. Hogg and Ms. Hamel to be planning commission. Um, let's see here, and then on 6:00 E, again, as an elephant, 6:00 E, motion to approve, uh, the regular meeting dates of the city council. I believe it's in there as your January meeting on the 7th. Uh, I'd like to move that to the 14th. Um, and then I guess I'll just mention it now. This has nothing to do with the agenda. I'll mention it during city manager comments. But I've arranged for a quick, uh, tour of the inside of the new 56 building Saturday at noon for city council members. Uh, if you'd like to do that. So I'll mention that again. And those are my proposed additions to the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Womack. Okay. What's the will of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the consent agenda as presented and amended.
I'll second that.
Uh, I would, I would state that you're adopting the agenda, not the consent agenda at this time.
Sorry, the agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve, adopt the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Have a roll call vote. Mrs. Atchison.
Yes.
Mrs. Conley.
Yes.
Mr. Grove.
Yes.
Mrs. Nixon.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yes.
Mrs. Race.
Yes.
Ms. Hall votes yes. Motion carries. Moving on to item six, the consent agenda.
So the only thing I would add here, a couple of minor things, is I wanted to specifically thank Mr. Craig Owens for continuing to serve on the zoning board of appeals. I'd like to thank Ms. Kathy Brummer for continuing to serve on the IFT committee. Of course, Ms. Powell, thank you also for serving on the boards that you serve on. I have a question about whether you continued on those boards. Um, I did include the item F, the NASPO master service agreement. Uh, I did want to talk with staff first, but I'm feeling comfortable with approval on that. And, uh, that's all I have for you guys regarding, uh, consent agenda items. Thank you.
Okay. Everyone looking over the consent agenda, it's pretty full.
I'd like to go ahead.
That we adopt the consent agenda, agenda as written.
I would second that.
Been moved and seconded to adopt the consent agenda. Any further discussions? Hearing none. We'll have a roll call vote. Mrs. Atchison.
Yes.
Mrs. Conley.
Yes.
Mr. Grove.
Yes.
Mrs. Nixon.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yes.
Mrs. Race.
Yes.
Ms. Hall votes yes. Motion carries. Moving on then to item seven, action items. Mr. Womack, item A.
Sorry, thank you. Um, so we did discuss this last time. Um, my interpretation of 12.11, which is on the second page, uh, was that employees would only be paid for the time that they could earn in one year at the end of their service. Um, I discussed that with staff. Staff felt that, uh, they should be paid off for all of the time that they have in their leave banks uh, when they depart the city. And of course, council is aware that we have previously modified that to max out at two years of service. So the maximum payout at the end of service would be the amount of PTO that they could have in their leave banks uh, at two years. And then that 7.25 has not been modified. That is still the buyback of up to 40 hours of forfeited approved paid time off. Um, and, uh, I, I think it's somewhat fair, you know, I, I know council members would like us to take more time off. Uh, that is the way the policy was originally written. Unfortunately, now a year, year and a half into it, it's just, it's so very difficult for certain positions to get away from the office. Um, and maybe, maybe we are now in a position, especially with the way the budget has been very healthy, that maybe we need to, uh, get another person on staff that might be able to help, uh, current staff members take more time off. Uh, but this is a possible solution. And I think it's fair, especially in light of what council did previously with the 50% buyback, which I personally thought was a little too generous. So I guess I'll leave it to council whether they think this is an appropriate, uh, modification of the policy.
I have a question for clarity.
Go right ahead.
So if I heard Mr. Womack correctly, um, it's staffs wish that should at some point they leave the employee of the city, that they be able to pay out, uh, be paid out for all accrued, uh, paid time off that they would have received. But I'm, I'm questioning how that, um, combines with the maximum of 40 hours per year that we were going to pay the employee for if they did not take. I guess I'm not understanding how those go together.
Yeah, it's, it's a little complicated. So the current policy is that you can carry up to one year of paid time off into the new year. And the point of that, of course, is, so my, uh, anniversary date is August 1st. If I had planned a vacation on August 2nd, in the new fiscal year, I have no chance, I'm sorry, in the new anniversary year, I have no chance to build up vacation time to take. So we're allowed to carry up to one year of earned paid time off into the new year. So theoretically, if I take absolutely zero vacation for two years, I could then quit this job and be paid out for the maximum amount of money, I'm sorry, vacation time, paid time off, that I could earn in those two years. Uh, that's kind of a legacy holdover, um, Jerry, correct me if I'm wrong, um, of how we used to kind of provide a little bit of a retirement bonus um, for staff leaving the employment of the city. Now, the way it works with the 40 hours is you only can carry one year into the new year. So let's say you don't take any vacation time for two full years. Now you're entering your third year. That means that the first year that you would carry it into the second year, you, you would lose hundreds of hours of vacation time. So in lieu of you losing all of those hundred hours, uh, the policy would now be, we would pay up to 40 hours of that lost time and the rest of it would be forfeited. If that answers your question, Counselor Nixon.
So I, I apologize, but I'm, I'm still not understanding. So I, I understand that, you know, instead of losing all of that paid time off, the city is willing to pay up to 40 hours. But it sounded like if a person decided to leave the city, then they would have up to two years of whatever paid time off they earned. And they would, uh, take that with them as a nice little cash out bonus. I'm not necessarily opposed to either. I just don't understand how they work together.
Well, you, you pretty much nailed it on the head with your explanation. Um, one is simply a kind of limiting the amount of, um, I guess, paid time off that the city has to keep on the books. Now, you'll recall last year, the city council, I thought very generously, bought back 50% of the time that was going to be lost. Well, I mean, that can put the city at a position of having to pay out hundreds of hours. Um, this way, we're limiting it to a maximum of 40 hours. Uh, the other possibility is instead of 40 hours buyback, you just leave the policy the way it is. And you say, you use your vacation time or you lose your vacation time. Now, the problem with that is positions like city manager or DPW director have a much more difficult time going on vacation than some other positions. Uh, so you're putting them at a bit of a disadvantage. And then you, you pretty much hit the other one on the head as well. And that is, it's a little bit of a payout at the end of service um, for, I guess, not using your vacation time and focusing on your work. And council can
Oh, I'm sorry.
As I said, if council doesn't feel comfortable with it, you know, we can certainly table this and continue to talk about it. Uh, this is simply a proposal, you know, I'm kind of caught in the middle because I represent management. Uh, but I'm also trying to present, uh, what I think is a fair, um, argument from staff about losing, you know, vacation time versus being dedicated to the work, et cetera, et cetera.
I, I, I'm not necessarily opposed. I'm just, I apologize, Mike. I'm just not getting it. Um, so if someone were to decide to leave, as the policy stands right now, if someone tomorrow retired with all of our best wishes, do they only get paid for 40 hours? Is, is that what I'm understanding our current policy is?
Um, no, I'm, I'm pretty sure the current policy is essentially the same thing that's, uh, being presented to you. Just the language was clarified. I think maybe at this point, Ms. Nixon, um, probably table this and I'll put together a much more comprehensive explanation um, so that we're all on the same page. We're not, we're not in a rush to accomplish this. This is just something that, um, we need a clarification for on personnel policies.
Okay, very good.
I do have one concern, and that's that if we really cannot let people take their time off and then they forfeit that, we're basically giving them a benefit we have no intention of giving them, which seems problematic to me.
And that is half the argument. Um, although, uh, the mayor and I were discussing just before the meeting, um, maybe that's a staff person, you know, being unwilling to go on vacation.
Well, that's different. Where that's where I'm saying my concern would be if we're saying to them, I'm sorry, you can't take vacation. That's different than they just choose not to take it. And if we tell people, I'm sorry, you need to be here, you can't take vacation. And then we say, but we're giving you paid time off. And then we're not going to pay you for it. Well, what we're saying is we don't give you vacation time.
Sure, entirely fair argument.
I feel like we need to clarify that. If we're not going to pay you for it, we have to ensure that you are at least allowed to take it.
Well, and so Pam, the, the way I would answer that is right now I have economic development up the lazu. I've got marijuana businesses. They all have strict deadlines. They all need a point of contact. I'm trying to get the fire station done, all these things, right? If I leave for a two week vacation, that stuff doesn't get done. I'm dedicated to this job. I want these things to do, uh, to happen and to be accomplished and finalized because it's good for the community. Um, does that mean I don't want to take vacation? No. Um, it just means I kind of feel an overriding sense to get the job accomplished, which overrides, I guess, my desire to go on vacation sometimes. Um, it, it's a very difficult line. And if I'm being forced into a position of losing time or not, maybe next time I'll say, you know what, I get that you want to be here, but you're going to have to wait another month because the city manager is gone on vacation. Now, the conversation that Mr. Hall and I had was maybe this is a staffing issue. Maybe, and of course, uh, I'm, I'm very thankful that Mr. LaRose and I were able to appoint, um, Tanya, Ms. Baker, to be our, uh, new, um, foreperson at the DPW. And I think that will enable Mr. LaRose to be able to take more of his vacation time. Um, but my position, uh, maybe I need an assistant city manager. I don't know. I don't, I don't have the solution, but this is a possible solution. And I think it might also work, you know, in favor of staffing issues as well. Um, because even though I'd love to go on as much vacation time as I possibly can, um, maybe I'd like a little cash bonus at the end of the year instead. So I take that 40 hours, I, I work and I get a couple hundred bucks in place.
And I'm not opposed to that. I just want to make sure that we don't put people, I'm thinking particularly of like our DPW people who come in and work at storms and keep working when they might've had something planned to be off, but now they can't because we have some kind of emergent brush tree removal or snow plowing, whatever it is. And I don't, I don't want to be in a place where we're saying to people, yeah, we give you four weeks of paid vacation over the course of a year, except we don't ever actually let you take any of it.
Yeah, no, I totally
And now we're not going to pay you for it either. So at that point, it's, you know, it's kind of, I, I just don't want to be in the position of that. We should either be providing it so they can take the vacation or we should be providing a way to carry it over or a way to pay them. Otherwise, it becomes a pretend benefit that we're not actually providing. And it's one thing if they're choosing not to, it's another if they just are not able to because there's no one to replace them.
Yeah, I, I think, I think the, the policy that I presented is reasonable. I think I'm just not explaining it well enough. So I guess I would ask for a motion to table and I'll bring this back, uh, with some better explanation perhaps more.
Okay, I will make a motion, Mr. Mayor, to table this.
Okay. A second.
I'd support that.
Thank you. It's been moved.
Yeah, question prior to going on.
Yes.
Mr. Womack, would it be possible for you to give us some kind of an idea as to what a hybrid person would be here? Either a part-time or a full-time person to be your assistant, uh, deputy manager, uh, slash whatever you need along with this. And then if you have a comparison of what another person is going to be compared to the monies that it may cost by paying Compared to the monies that it may cost by paying for vacation time that's not taken. I'd like to see that as a comparison.
Yep, that's fair, I'll, I'll, I'll do my best to bring that to the next meeting.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, is there any further discussion on tabling the time off buyback change to personal policy? All those in favor of tabling this motion signify by saying aye. All those oppose, sign no. Motion carries. Table paid time off buyback change to personnel policy. Moving on, Mr. Womax, to item B.
Oh, council, recall that last year, um, the city council very generously offered up to fifteen hundred dollars of policing. And other municipal services to the Cedar Blitz gravel bike race. Uh, this year is tentatively scheduled for May twenty-second. Uh, it will occur in and around the Harder Sierra Springs. It will exit north on the White Pine Trail, it'll be many, many miles in the township. And then there will be a, uh, sprint finish up First Street. So this is an event that will, uh, bring in lots of people, I think, uh, maybe not the first year, but over the years. Um, and I think it will overall be both an economic development, um, uh, economic benefit to the community. Um, and frankly, I think it's just gonna be good overall. Um, I'm also, I think, going to approach the DDA, uh, I'm sure Ms. Johnson has the number of her head, but I think they. Offered up to a thousand dollars for this patch here. Unfortunately, there's some kind of, I don't know, sickness going around, so this didn't occur in this patch here. You're hoping to do it on May twenty-second this year.
What's the will of the council?
I would like to make a motion, uh, to support, um, providing fifteen hundred dollars worth of policing and services. To, uh, make this bike race happen.
I will support that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve item B to offer fifteen hundred dollars towards. The Cedar Blitz gravel bike race, any further discussion?
I just hope it can happen.
Well, the DDA also is hopeful that'll happen, they're really pushing this too, so let's hope it all happens.
Yeah, it's pretty exciting stuff.
And this event would have to come back to the council as a, uh, community event application anyways, so you guys will see it again afterward.
Yes, indeed, thank you. Okay, roll call vote, Mrs. Atchison.
Yes.
Ms. Conley.
Yes.
Mr. Gross.
Yes.
Mrs. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Powell.
Yes.
Ms. Race.
Yes.
Mr. Hall votes yes, motion carries. Item C, Mr. Womax.
Uh, so this would be the, uh, former fireworks store, uh, planning on being the Agromed Store. Uh, as part of their site plan approval process, uh, they were required to install a sidewalk. Uh, anybody who's familiar with the property knows that there is no sidewalk to the north and there is no sidewalk to the south. Uh, so they're asking for a conditional waiver of the installation of that sidewalk. Uh, I had informed them that the council only approves of these, uh, on the condition that. If the sidewalk were to ever meet their northern or southern border, they would be required at that point. And of course, council's also aware that under the ordinances, we do have the authority to specially assess any property in the city. Uh, for the installation of sidewalks, so. Uh, I guess I would ask if council wants to approve of the sidewalk waiver, uh, as presented.
What's the will of the council to, on this sidewalk waiver?
I think it makes sense to me. Put a sidewalk in and then there's nowhere else to go. So, so waive it for now.
Is that a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve of a sidewalk waiver at one three nine oh three White Creek Avenue. Additional upon their installation of a sidewalk in the event that a sidewalk reaches either their north or south property line.
Support.
That, Ms. Atchison?
Yeah.
The council had waived this one time before when it was the fireworks store and then the intent is to. Put the sidewalk in at a later date and it does happen over the years, so. Any other discussion, concerns or question before I call the vote on this?
I'd like to say as a city, we can do better than this and we should get some sidewalks out there. I see people out there walking through the ditches with their kids. And it's time for us to put some dog on sidewalks, get started somewhere out there. It's really kind of sad with the campground and Culvers and all kinds of people out there now.
Ms. Powell, I agree in a very written down sidewalk, uh, special assessment discussion on my pad here, so. Uh, I think this will be something we can discuss over the winter and we can see maybe about installing some windsor sidewalk in the summer.
Yes. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, Mrs. Atchison?
Ms. Atchison, yes.
Sorry.
Okay.
Mrs. Conley.
Yes.
Mr. Gross.
Yes.
Mrs. Nixon.
Yes.
Mrs. Powell.
No.
Mr. Race.
Yes.
Mr. Hall, yes, the motion carries. Thank you, moving on then to item D.
So I hate to put this on council, we have two good, strong candidates. Um, I know they're both very impressed and very supportive of the community library. Um, and I guess I would ask council's opinion, uh, whether they would like to appoint Mrs. Neparowski or Ms. Vu. To the Cedar Springs Library Board for a term between twenty and twenty-four.
What's the will of the council?
I'll make a motion to appoint, um, Ms. Vu. To the Cedar Springs Library Board for the twenty twenty through twenty twenty-four.
I have a que-
To support?
No, I have a que-
After we have the second, we can do that, how's that?
I would second that.
Thank you, Ms. Nixon. Mrs. Atchison, you have a question and concern.
Do we only have one position open, is that what we're?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay, and what, and I hear the names. Very well.
Sorry, but, but the two applicants that we have at this time are Mary Evelyn Vu, V U, is her last name.
Yeah, okay.
And Shandell Neparowski.
Okay, I just wanted to get the Proctor, uh, pronunciation of their names, thank you.
Any further discussions?
I, I have one comment if I could.
Mr. Gross, go ahead.
I feel they're both very good candidates. I feel however though, as much as I feel, uh. That Mrs. Neparowski could be a benefit on the board. I think she's at a unfair or in a unfair position. Uh, because they could be seen as somebody that the, uh. That was picked because she's part of the city functions here as far as her job. And, uh, I think that could put her in an unfair position, so I would be happy with either one of them, but I can support Ms. Vu.
I too. Agreed.
Mrs. Clark would like to say something?
She can't, we're voting on this.
Okay, I didn't know if she, as the library director, I didn't know if she had something to add.
Nope, not, she's had her chance for four minutes.
Okay.
Okay, any other further discussions on the council members before I call the vote? Hearing none. Mrs. Atchison. Miss.
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 Miss?
Lisa.
Yeah.
Okay, Mrs. Conley.
Yes.
Mr. Gross.
Yes.
Mrs. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Powell.
Yes.
Mrs. Race.
Yes.
Oh, votes yes, motion carries. Okay, moving on then to item E, Mr. Womax.
So, uh, I first wanted to say thank you, um, the city council and some other members of the community. Were very helpful in identifying some people that, uh, might like to serve on the city planning commission. Uh, so, uh, Mr. Hogg, I've had a couple discussions with him, he is a highly intelligent person. I think he'd be a great asset to the planning commission. And, uh, I believe I spoke with Ashley Hamel, am I correctly, correctly saying that, hopefully? Uh, Ashley and I had a discussion this morning, uh, she seemed very eager and interested in the planning commission. Uh, I thought maybe I'd scare her away by discussing what we do on a daily basis, but, uh, she. Uh, at least was very, uh, uh, nice and, and spared my feelings and lied and said that she, uh, was even more interested afterwards. Um, so I guess I would ask that the city council make a motion to appoint, uh, Mr. Hogg and Ms. Hamel. To the city planning commission, um, and we will get them started on December twenty-ninth.
Thank you. To will the council.
I'll make a motion to, um, select the planning, the planning commission. Could you repeat the names for me, please, Mike?
Sure, it's Mr. Hogg, H O G G, and Ms. Hamel, H A M E L.
This is your hug and this Hamel to the planning commission.
Mrs. Nixon beat your, or Mrs. Race beat you. Okay, any further discussion on these appointments to the planning commission?
It's gonna be a good time this year.
Busy.
I'm excited for them.
I am too, we got a full complement of people on that planning commission yet.
Yeah, it'll be great.
There, I have a roll call vote, Ms. Atchison.
Yes.
Got it right, Ms. Conley.
Yes.
Mr. Gross.
Yes.
Mrs. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Powell.
Yes.
Mrs. Race.
Yes.
Mr. Hall votes yes, the motion carries. Any other thing to be, to be brought before the council, Mr. Womax, before we move on to discussion?
Nothing that I'm aware of, but this time.
Thank you, moving on to discussion items, Mr. Womax. Our drain commission.
Yeah, so unfortunately, it seems like it's come time to pay the piper. Uh, as council's been aware, the Kent County, uh, Drain Commissioner's Office has been working on designing a, a county drain. Uh, that affects the, I believe, eighty-year-old drain that runs right through the middle of downtown. So, um, I know residents have started receiving their letters, I've received a few phone calls from people. I've, I've done my best to try to assist them, but, uh, this is not a city project. Uh, I don't know how I could possibly more, be more clear about that, this is a Kent County project. Um, the Drain Commissioner is in charge of it. Um, and so after the project was determined to be, uh, important and required to be accomplished. There are two, um, things that still need to happen. Um, there's the letting, uh, which is when the Drain Commissioner's Office receives bids back, other plans. So at that point, we should know how much the project will cost. And then there is the apportionment meeting. So the Drain Commissioner's Office has released the apportionment numbers, which are included in your packet. And each, uh, property owner in the city will be responsible for a portion of the overall cost of this rain project. Um, I've seen some costs as low as zero point, uh, zero five percent, which would be five one-hundredths of one percent. And unfortunately, the city looks like we're gonna be responsible for about forty-one, forty-two percent of the overall project. So, this will be, I believe, um. I don't know if mortgaged is the correct word, but mortgaged out over a twenty-year period. So the year-to-year costs for individual citizens should be fairly low. Uh, but of course, nobody's ever happy about spending money, I, I get that, I appreciate that. And, uh, the city's gonna be put into a tough position of having to put money aside in our own budget every year. Uh, to pay off this project, so. I'm thankful, and I'm sure Ms., uh, Falcon is thankful that our budget has been fairly good the last couple of years. Uh, the economic development's paying off and, uh, it's hopeful that it doesn't cost us too much money. But, for anything the city council might want to discuss about this project.
Yes, Mr. Womax, too, did the county aware of our vendors list on who we allow to? Work on our sewer and water mains, can they be made aware of that list?
So I don't know if, uh, there really will be any work actually performed on our sewer and water systems. Uh, they will.
If they have to lower them.
So they, they will be working around them, and I'm sure that, uh, Mr. LaRose will be on top of that. Um, of course, our city engineer has been aware of it, they've been working back and forth with, uh, the Spicer Group. Who's the engineer for the drain project. Uh, but yes, Mr. LaRose, we should probably make sure that they're aware of the city's desire to have our people. Uh, working on our water and our sewer systems to the best of our abilities.
Yes, indeed. Yes, I see we are not alone in this drain commission project, Sand Lake also has a drain that is, uh. Under intense scrutiny and discussion right now too. Is there a possible way to put in our newsletter? Or the press or the post that any concerns or questions on this drain should be directed to? The Kent County Drain Commission, not us.
Yeah, so the county letter that you see in your packet is what was sent out to the public. Um, I believe it says in there, contact the Kent County, uh, uh, Drain Commissioner's Office. Um, now, the city fully plans on getting the word out. Um, but I didn't want to do it too soon because the apportionment meeting isn't until, I think, January fifteenth. That's the important one, that's the one that people will be very concerned about. So I think we're gonna wait until probably after the new year to get the word out on that one. Uh, just because I think people will forget it if we do it now.
Yes, I reviewed that map and I see they added some more district to it and. Took away some of the districts that were not impacted by that drain, I'm glad to see that. Any questions or concerns on a discussion item before we move on to communications?
Is it possible to ask them to come to the city and speak to the citizens directly like they did the last time?
I don't know what you mean by come to the city and speak to the citizens directly now. The letting meeting is gonna be very similar to our bid opening process where. Uh, they will read out the bids that were received for the project, that's a public meeting. The apportionment meeting, uh, almost certainly will occur somewhere here in the community.
Okay.
Um, but it will not occur in front of city council, if that's what.
Right, no, I was asking about, like we did at the school the last time.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure that it'll be something very similar to that.
Good, good, very good.
Thank you, uh, moving on to communications, any questions? Mr. Womax, you have a quite concern or, or an invitation for Saturday for a tour through the fire station if I'm correct at noon?
Correct, Saturday at noon, uh, show up at the fire station, I've got the code to get into the door. I figured we'd spend three to five minutes looking around and, and we'd go somewhere warmer after that.
Thank you, I will be out of town, so. Thank you. I will be out of town, so I will not be able to make that. So show up and look and see what we got going.
If, if the mayor's not gonna be there, that means the city manager will be there by himself, I think.
Marty will be there.
We'll be a few people. Moving on to department reports. Mr. Womax, city manager report.
Mr. Hall, you stole my thunder. The only thing I had was the tour of the fire station building. And other than that, things are going swimmingly. I hope everybody has a happy Hanukkah. Starts tonight.
Started.
And and thank, thankfully, the, the COVID that we thought we were all exposed to turned out not to be COVID, so we'll be reopening on Monday to the public. And I guess we're all looking forward to the holidays and the new year.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on then to any questions of manager? Before I move to departmental reports. Public Works, Mr. LaRose, any questions to him?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'd just like to say, yeah, I'm aware of, there is some water main work that is gonna be done. And I will make them aware that there are certain people that we allow to work around our water main for any drops or anything that they have to do. I think it's important that they use those people.
I agree.
Yep, thank you very much.
I figured Epic will be hauling in more dirt. They've wore out the dirt they've got there already.
Yep.
Moving on, any questions of Mr. LaRose? Moving on to the police department. Any questions for Sergeant Probst? Hearing none. Moving on to the fire department. Any questions or concerns for Chief Frazier? Hearing none. Moving on to city clerk. Hearing none there. Moving on, financial director, Mrs. Falcon.
Just like to wish everybody happy holidays and stay safe.
Thank you.
Thank you, Darla.
Food enforcement, building inspections. Boards and commissions.
Going once, going twice.
All right, eleven, we move on to council comments. Mrs. Powell?
Um, I'd just like to say that on Saturday at Meyer, when you go up by the cash out, they have these cards to feed the community food pantries. Saturday, if you buy a card for ten dollars, Myers will double it.
Wow.
So you'll get a thirty-dollar value on one card and it goes to the Cedar Springs community.
Great.
So all your friends, all you folks out there on YouTube, let's get some food out to the folks that need it. Ten bucks will get you thirty. Can't beat that. The other thing is the blood drive is Tuesday at the Methodist Church. It starts approximately noon. If you want to donate, you can go on the website to the Versity Blood Drive and make an appointment. We had a hundred and seventeen percent higher than normal blood given donated last month. Very happy about that. Plus, if you think you ever had COVID and you can donate, they will give you a free antibody, antibody COVID test, so. You know, it's all worth it. The blood goes to good things. You get a free COVID test and some cookies and it's a wonderful thing. So try to get there Tuesday if you can. Otherwise, make an appointment. You can go to many places around Kent County and so forth, so give some blood.
Indeed.
Happy, happy holidays to everybody and we hope twenty twenty-one brings us much more happiness. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Powell. Mr. Gross?
I also would like to comment about the giving of blood. I know we're going through a lot of it as a country right now, as a state. I used to give a lot of it. Unfortunately, because of some of the medications I take, they no longer want me to provide. So one being a blood thinner. So unfortunately, I cannot give, but I would recommend and wholeheartedly recommend to everybody, if they can possibly do it, to do it. It is a lifesaver. Would like to thank all of the department heads, city manager, all of you here on the board for all the effort that goes in. I especially thank those from the planning commission and other boards that we have. They are appreciated. And those who have stepped up to become part of those boards now, I especially appreciate you for doing so when there's so many people aren't willing to volunteer their time to assist. Other than that, season's greetings to everyone. And again, I hope we have a very happy and prosperous new year and there's still a lot of things to come, so stay tuned.
Oh, that is our last meeting.
Yeah, the year. I
Grace.
I feel like every day is the same to me, so the thought of a new year coming already is crazy to me. All I know is that I hope everyone is safe and healthy through the holidays. Wear your masks. If you can't visit family, just Zoom call, make sure they're okay. I am very grateful to be sitting in this seat right now. I have a great team, I call family around me. Unfortunately, I can't hug any of them right now, too far away, but.
Air hug.
Yeah, air hugs, but yes, again, we just have a great group of people that work here and I'm excited for the new people to come in and really just feel that, so. Happy holidays and you're here to twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, Mrs. Race. Mrs. Conley?
Yes, it's the first night of Hanukkah, so everyone who celebrates Hanukkah, eat roulacas and some applesauce and have a lovely evening and the big thanks to the folks from the chamber and the community building development team for the beautiful Christmas tree that is lit. If you haven't had a chance to see it, I highly recommend that you go give it a look. And I would also like to say that today the FDA was meeting on a vaccine. So with a little luck, by tomorrow, the first Americans will be getting a vaccine. So hopefully it is not too far away from all of us. And as much as I love seeing all of you on Zoom and all of my fun backgrounds, I'm looking forward to seeing all of us in person when we can make that actually happen. So that would be what I have. And again, everyone stay healthy and I appreciate our staff for being flexible and working from home when they need to, coming in and taking care of people when they need to and just making sure that we keep, keep plugging through with this time of crazy pandemic.
Thank you, Miss, Mrs. Nixon.
Well, just to piggyback on something that Rose said about the, the blood drive that they'll test you for COVID antibodies. Conbalascend plasma is one of our frontline treatments for people who are in the hospital suffering from COVID nineteen. It's, it's made a difference. The studies, when it first came out, said that it reduced mortality by about thirty percent, so that's huge. So anyone who has had COVID nineteen, who can donate plasma, it's saving people every day. So if you can donate, please do. Happy holidays and we'll see you all in the new year.
Thank you, Mrs. Nixon. Mrs. Atchison?
Happy holidays, everybody. Yes, I hope that everything in the new year is going to change. I can, a lot of development, hopefully that will get going. Hopefully, we won't lose too many businesses. On small business weekend, I kind of drove through the town and visited some of the stores I haven't visited on Main Street. They were cute little stores, so I keep trying to spend my money closer to home so that these small businesses can stay afloat. So think about that when you're doing your holiday shopping. That's all.
Thank you. Thank you. You know, I would like to echo all the concerns and best wishes everyone has given this evening. We have one special best wish and a happy holiday season going out to Northwest Kent Mechanical Incorporated. They sent us a very beautiful poinsettia, a large poinsettia plant here to decorate our council chamber, so thank you very much. Thanks again this evening for those persons stepping up to those boards. Every one of them are very highly qualified. And we hope we move forward on a lot of this stuff we have pending and the tree lighting turned out very nice. Mrs. Powell was there to represent the city. Thank you very much. And any other questions or concern to be brought before this council this evening, Mr. Womax?
I didn't know.
Hearing none?
So no, thank you.
Hearing none, we stand adjourned. Thank you one and all for everything you do for the city.
Thank you, everybody.
Happy holidays.